We are in Blue Ash. This is the first meeting of the year where we are out in the community in the evening, trying to be as accessible as possible. And so, we're moving the meetings around this year, once a month. We've published those sites, and so you can find those on the website. But they're all over the county, as you might imagine. So, we just want to thank the people of Blue Ash and the elected officials for hosting our meeting this evening. Commissioner Parks was just remarking how nice these chambers are, and I think we've said that about everywhere that we've gone. And they're nicer than ours, is really what we're ... So, we're working on that. But anyways, thank you so much for hosting us. We're very grateful. Mark Cirque and the mayor, I believe, is not here, but the vice mayor is here, Parmen Gerverty. I know I'm not saying that correctly. But if you wouldn't mind coming up and just giving us a couple of words, an idea of what's happening in Blue Ash, just a little bit of an update for a couple of minutes, we'd be really grateful. Talk about the good stuff going on in Blue Ash. Well, or you know the room better than I do.
But I've been looking at you, not them. Here we go. My name is PJ Javari. I'm the vice mayor of the Blue Ash. And I just came back from another good company, Riverside Mortgage Company. We just made an opening, and I was there to open ceremony. They're going to have 75 jobs and some more jobs coming to Blue Ash. As we know, that our Blue Ash is close to number one in Ohio or in Cincinnati. And because of our great park we have, Summit Park, and we almost completed last year. And we have lots of people come and visit and give us a warm welcome and saying good things, all good things about it. So, because of the few things that we are doing that so many companies like to come and open up their offices here, and we have so many amenities in Blue Ash. That's where our constituents, they like all the services that we provide them. So, with that, I would like to welcome you guys, and welcome with the open arm. And I hope you make, not just one, make few more and use our facilities for your meeting. That will be great. So, welcome, and see you later.
Yes, very good. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you again for having us. All right, so we'll make introductions, then, of the folks at the dais. Jackie Pianotta, the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners, is to my far right. To my immediate right is our newest commission member, Victoria Parks. I'm Denise Treehouse. The vice president to the commission, Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, is to my left. And next to her is Jeff Aludo, the county administrator. We will start the meeting with silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Ms. Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. We've been joined by legal counsel, Michael Friedman. I think he was stuck on the highway. Welcome, Michael. All right, we do have a number of speakers' cards, all of which are on items that are not related to agenda items. So, we're going to move straight to the speaker cards and let the public comment. So, Jay Janis, you have the first speaker's card. Please come forward. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. And Jackie, the red, yellow, green, is over here on the desk, just for your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome all to the first meeting of your body in the new decade, new year, and out to the burbs. I'd like to also, I'm speaking tonight, I'm a resident of Sycamore Township, Ohio. I'm speaking to you tonight as an individual, not representing any governmental entity unit as a group. But I would like to introduce all of you in our third row in the back, our newest trustee, Thomas James Jr. I have two issues tonight that I wish to address you on. One, as you mentioned earlier, that you will be meeting in the suburbs throughout the year. And I am aware, and I did receive the list with the dates, times, and locations, and I appreciate that. And I'm just curious, would you consider any additional meetings in the evenings at any other locations? Or right now, are you pretty well firm and fixed for those 12 locations for the remainder of the year?
We have contacted all of them, so we're pretty fixed.
Would you consider any additional locations?
Outside the building?
No, I mean, aside from those 12. I mean, at another governmental entity unit that they wish to host you. Another suburb is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we're trying to do 11 per year, and so I think that's the schedule we're on.
Okay, thank you. My last issue is the following. County engineer Hubbard's here. And in our township, later this month, there'll be a second public hearing on a major reconstruction project that's proposed for the northern part of the township along Fields Zerl Road. As he mentioned to me earlier, it's involving some other governmental entity units. I attended, I believe, the first public hearing they had on this late last year. One of the proposals was to close off permanently the ends of seven roads in the High Point community of Sycamore Township. The Sycamore Township trustees, the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, the Sycamore Township Fire Department are opposed to that. And when it comes up for a resolution or funding for that, for public safety and emergency issues, I would ask, could you consider not to close off or approve any funding? They would close off seven roads in the northern part of our township. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Joseph Dickhouse. House is going to talk to us about the 2020 census. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for all the work you've done with the 2020 census so far. I know most people don't think it started, but it actually started last year in March when we hired recruiters. At that time, we were out of the Columbus office. I'm a recruiter, and I was one of the first. Now, we have 12 recruiters for the 2020 census working Hamilton County. And we have a Cincinnati office open in the old Shakita Building, fourth floor. And I wanted to thank you for all the opportunities you've given us around the county to make ourselves visible. I also wanted to express to the people that are in the room here that I have information for people that want to work with the 2020 census to help us ensure a complete count of Hamilton County. Have any questions, commissioner, for me?
We had a presentation a few weeks ago regarding the census, and Tammy Simmendinger brought it in front of us. She was very thorough, and we have been trying to promote the complete count since then. Would you please provide, so that the audience knows, the contact information in the case that anybody wants to work for the census and be one of the canvassers, particularly in the summertime?
Yes, commissioner, thank you. All the applications are taken through our website, 2020census.gov/jobs, and that's on every piece of material I hand out. There's also a 1-800 number on all the material I hand out, where a real person will answer the phone and help answer questions on how to apply for the 2020 census.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioner.
Appreciate the information. Our next speaker is Jeff Capell, council member from Blue Ash. I'm sorry, I neglected to recognize the council members. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for coming out to Blue Ash, seeing how we do things out here. And congratulations to Commissioner Parks on your appointment. I definitely hope you'll stick around all year. It helps keep the stability of everything going. And I really like the timing that you've given in coming out here, too, because right now, I'm trying to bring videotaping of our council meetings to Blue Ash City Council. We don't have it right now. And so, hopefully, with you guys being here, you videotape your meetings. People can look at the camera here, a couple back there, at just how simple it is to video-record meetings and how it makes these meetings so much more accessible to the 800,000-plus residents who are not here in the room but may be interested in what's going on anyways. So, as I mentioned, I'm glad you get out to these meetings, see how things are going outside of just kind of the usual downtown bubble. And the specific issue I wanted to address that on is the impact of your budgeting on how that impacts the budgets of regular people. The ward I represent in Blue Ash is a bit more of a middle-class ward. The affluent areas of Blue Ash are mostly not in my area. So, the people I represent really have to budget well. Now, recently, we've had what is functionally a property tax increase related to the stadium tax fund, because when Jeff Byrd and others passed the stadium tax 20-plus years ago, they did not tell the truth about how that was going to perform. So, because the stadium fund is not as funded as it should be, the property tax rollback portion of that is not as strong as it should be, and so, we have to pay more taxes. Now, unfortunately, the commission and the corrupt Port Authority gave FC Cincinnati a 0% sales tax rate on their $250 million stadium, meaning that they'll pay no sales taxes to a sales tax fund that is struggling because stadiums don't perform the way they're supposed to. We've also had a sales tax increase at the same time that FC Cincinnati was given a 0% county property tax rate on their $250 million stadium. So, again, the kind of people I represent have to pay a lot more money while the billionaires who run FC Cincinnati pay 0% property and sales tax rates. So, while you're out here, please consider the kind of things that the people I represent have to go through, and let's make better budget decisions where we're not raising taxes on 800,000 people while giving billionaires who own sports teams 0% tax rates. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the final speaker's card for the evening. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, we're going to move, then, on to comments and motions of the commissioners. Vice President Summerau-Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few comments. I'd like to let my constituents know some of the things, just a few of the things I've done in the last week. I provided opening remarks at the HCDC luncheon. Our president was under the weather, and they asked me, could I come in and do opening remarks? And so, I presented the opportunity to do that. And so, that was a very nice luncheon. I also met with some community advocates, Mr. Herschel Daniels and Mr. Robert Harris, who are very adamant, of course, about transportation for one issue is their concern, but many others. So, I plan on meeting with them on a fairly regular basis. I also met with Mr. Kevin Farmer, who is, we know, he comes and speaks almost every other week about bail reform. He's very passionate about the fairness in the system. He's talking about bail reform, and some other people this week were ringing the bell alarm as it relates to increasing costs for bails. And so, I don't want us, as a county, to be caught sleeping on this issue. We have not taken it up yet, but I'm going to ask the president if that's something, not now, of course, that we might want to take a look at, because we know that bail reform, there is some disparity as it relates to bills and how they are decided on. And I went to the OKI Transportation Group. OKI is Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana group, and it's about 113 people in that group. And to decide on transportation upgrades, revisions, they get grants for mass transportation. And so, it's just very important that we continue to be involved as the president also goes to those meetings. So, it's just a great meeting for any community people that want to be a part of. You can sit there, not necessarily be able to speak, but you can listen to what's going on. And also, on that same day, since I had to be at OKI, my administrative assistant, Kimberly Lee, attended the Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Association. They had a, well, designated HUD funding for homeless veterans. And so, they also have three resource centers there for people within the Finlader area to come in and look at resumes, to improve themselves, and to become more independent. So, she was a part of that, and I thank her for that. This is also my second week of a leadership academy, which I am very happy to be a part of. It's a webinar. It's called High Profile Leadership Academy. And the main moderator for the 12-week program is Colin, General Colin Powell. And I've picked up a lot of good nuggets as it relates to leadership that I'm trying to use as we speak, even with my team. So, I'm really excited about the opportunity that Hamilton County has allowed me to be a part of that academy. I also gave opening remarks at a national faith race and politics conference at the National Underground Freedom Center. And John Hopkins was sponsoring it, along with Crossworld Church. And so, I thank them very much for asking me to give the opening remarks. Lastly, I'd like to announce my chief of staff, that their first day of work will be the 24th of January. It would be a great addition to our team. This person is an entrepreneur, community advocate, very articulate, has served on Hamilton County boards and commissions, is working toward the same vision that our team has, moving Hamilton County forward. He is also a voice for the voiceless. Mr. Louis T. Hilton, or better known as Bishop Bobby Hilton, will be my next chief of staff. And for our next meeting on Thursday, we'll have a resolution to hopefully confirm that. That'll end my report.
Great, thank you.
Well, this is my first meeting, and it feels pretty good sitting up here. That's it.
Short and sweet. All right, thank you. I have one thing I wanted to announce, that I was able to participate in a forum on Saturday morning. It was the new elected officials throughout Hamilton County. There was a forum to make them more familiar with the ethics laws and the makings of, you know, what they do and the position they have. It was in conjunction with Hamilton County Planning and Development in the Center for Local Government. So, it's a great training. They had a nice attendance up at the Sharonville Convention Center, and so, I represented the commission in opening remarks there. And was, yeah, you were there. The newest Blue Ash council member was there. So, yeah, it was just a great group, and it was fun to see the new energy and the excitement in the room. So, also, it occurred to me that we need to make sure that you are, all sit on, all three of us, OKI being one of them, which is what reminded me of it, and the other ones that remain, that Commissioner Parks and Senator Wood... Get that done. So, why don't we have that come in front of the board next week at our meeting? I want to make sure that that's formally done, so that you are, you know, kind of duly sworn in on all those boards and commissions. And also, just want to mention that I am also looking forward to Bishop Hilton coming down to the county. He has served on the TLRC for a number of years and been a huge asset there. Jeff Aludo, I know that you are going to give an update on the coroner's office. The coroner's office is being built here in Blue Ash, and we thought it might be an appropriate time to have an update on where we are with the coroner's office in addition to anything else that you have.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, and I'll confine my remarks to that, other than just to say that I'm pleased to give a brief update on the coroner's office and crime lab, with it being out here in Blue Ash. We do partner with Blue Ash on so many things, whether it's in our planning and development, community development office, the county engineer, obviously. The Solid Waste Management District has a lot of partnering with Blue Ash, HCDC. We've partnered with Blue Ash on the Cooper Creek Event Center and some of the capital maintenance there. So, a lot of really good partnerships between the county and Blue Ash, not the least of which is the capital construction of a new coroner's office and crime lab here in Blue Ash. And I just wanted to take just a couple of minutes to go through this and give a more formal update on where we stand. As the board is aware, back in 2012 and through 2014, the development of new crime lab in Hamilton County was cited as really the number-one capital and public safety priority for the county and for the Board of County Commissioners. Beginning in 2000, even back further, in 2010, we began seeing some deficiencies in the current crime lab that we have down on Eden Avenue in the city of Cincinnati that were leading to some potential risks with our ability to effectively perform the functions of a coroner's office and crime lab that are really so important to the general criminal justice system, especially in an urban county like Hamilton County. Generally speaking, just for those who may be watching at home, without an effective crime lab and without an effective coroner's office in a community, the criminal justice system really can't function. Evidence can't be processed in a timely manner. You have people sitting in jail longer. Crimes don't get solved. Jail population remains higher. So, the coroner's office and crime lab is really a critical, if maybe not very visible, element in the criminal justice and public safety chain. So, specific to our crime lab, a 2012 report identified numerous deficiencies in the current crime lab that we needed to correct through the update of that crime lab. Specifically, and we've got some pictures here, but our current crime lab is outdated and undersized. It's roughly 38,000 square feet compared to what the consultant's study in 2012 told us what needed to be roughly a 90,000 to 93,000 square-foot facility. So, we're seeing very cramped facilities. We have forensic analysis, as you can see in some of these pictures. We have forensic analysis occurring in hallways. We have literally fold-out tables being used for evidence examination. We have the existing morgue, which is routinely at capacity. The electric system is maxed out in the facility, leading to power problems on a routine basis. We have code violations. We have, as you can see here, there's some more pictures of some of the cramped and outdated facilities. We actually, on the right-hand side, yes, that is, there's actually drug evidence being dried out and stored in a utility closet, which I'm sure is at the top of the list of every best-practice manual for crime lab operations in the country. And not to be understated, the existing building just lacks the capacity and the facilities for communication with the public, including the relatives of decedents who have to come into the crime lab, which is something that I don't want to understate either, that this is a facility that has to deal with that type of communication on a routine basis, and currently, we lack the facilities for it. The current staff and leadership of the crime lab and the coroner's office have made workarounds to all of these things, but they're not long-term solutions. So, the Board of County Commissioners made the development and the construction of a new crime lab its number-one priority back in 2013 and 14, and asked the administration to move forward on it. We have done that. Summit Park was chosen as the site for the new crime lab after an extensive community-wide search. The site was picked for numerous reasons, not the least of which is its access to accessible transportation, as well as the ability for it to serve in the future and down the road as more of a regional resource, serving the needs of multiple communities. We began construction in 2019 with a budget of $55 million, which anecdotally was the same dollar value that was identified in the 2012 assessment report that was done for the county. Little bit on construction. As I said, we broke ground really in 2019. Monarch Construction is our general contractor. Funding for the project was made available as we paid off debt on other county facilities. One of the missions that the board gave to us was to endeavor into this project without increasing our debt service budget. So, we paid off debt and defees debt on certain county facilities, and we basically replaced that expenditure with the debt service for the crime lab. So, we were able to do the project without any measurable increase in debt service expense for the county. In the end, the new facility will be roughly 85,000 square feet, a little bit less than what was identified in the assessment report, which was the result of some rigorous value engineering that we engaged in with the coroner's office. Construction should run through November of 2020, with an initial move-in projected for early 2021, with final building certification planned for April of 2021. The project is on budget. It is on time and on schedule, unless, of course, I think the coroner might say that the schedule should be yesterday. But we are on time for the delivery of the project. We are, in the first phase of the project, we saw over 20% small-business utilization. We saw over 20% MBE utilization. We're still compiling some of those numbers for the construction phase of the contract, but I expect at least our small-business numbers to be in excess of 30%. So, in the end, we're going to have what will be a state-of-the-art facility. It's going to be built not just for today's needs, but for the future. It's going to be a LEED-certified building. It will be a focus on energy efficiency and natural lighting, which is important to a laboratory environment. And it's going to be positioned in size, not just for current operations, but for the sizing of the operation that needs to happen in the future with the growth of evidence processing that we project to happen in the coroner's office and crime lab. It will also come with a training facility that will be usable by not just the county, the broader county organization, but also other entities and organizations in the community. So, that's just a little bit about where we are. We're on time. We're on budget. I think the coroner's office is pleased with where we are. I think, I know some of the local public safety, county public safety operations are pleased with what we're doing. So, I just wanted to provide the board a quick update on it. I also do just want to take this opportunity to thank the Blue Ash City Council, that's been a major partner in this, as well as city manager David Walts, assistant city manager Kelly Harrington, and Dan Johnson from the planning department, and Heath Waxman, who is the fire marshal here in Blue Ash. They've all been incredible partners as we've moved forward with this project over at Summit Park. So, that's just a little bit about where we are. I didn't want to take too much time, but just wanted to provide more than just a verbal update on it, given that we are out here in Blue Ash.
Yeah, thank you. I hope that's been informative to the folks that took the time to be here this evening. Two things. One is that I think the board will be interested in seeing the MBE/SBE numbers as they become available for the construction phase, so if you could get those to us when you have them.
Be happy to.
By way of an update. And also, I want to note that the location of this crime lab, you know, right now, it's in Cor... You see, it's in Coryville. And so, this location here in Blue Ash, as you all know, will create more of a regional complex and a regional feel for this. And the coroner has said more than once that she anticipates being able, then, to partner with some outlying jurisdictions for the work that she does, so that we can not only provide the service, but make some money, because we will be charging for those services. And so, it gives us the ability to do that in a more regional way, so that we can have more revenue generation in the one place in the county, you know, structure and the hierarchy where we're capable of doing something like that. I mean, so many of our departments don't lend themselves to that, like Ted Shop, but this one does. And so, I hope this facility will help us take advantage of some of those opportunities. Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Okay, great. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for the update. All right, we'll move into our regular agenda. Ted Hubbard, the county engineer, is with us as always. Ted, you've got five items on the agenda. Please walk us through all five.
Well, the first three, I'm very proud to bring before you. They are resolutions that would allow us to rescind resolutions to appropriate for property. So, the good news is, and this has to do with the Harrison Road Improvement Project in Green Township, we're talking about from Wesselman to Philview Circle. I'm proud to announce that we were able to reach resolution with the property owners, and therefore, there's no need to, there's no need to take the action any further. And I'm really glad to present that to you, because we would prefer to be able to reach agreement. Item four pertains to an agreement with Miami Township. It would authorize an agreement with Miami Township for the joint use of a rubber tire loader and also the use of salt, as we partner with many of our township and municipal communities to, you know, in an effort to provide snow and ice removal service. And so, this is one of those agreements. We haven't had to use it too much this year, but stay tuned. I'm sure it's coming. Item five pertains to a resolution that would authorize the commencement of the bidding process for the Sheed Road Bridge. This bridge needs to be replaced, and so, we are, it's one of those bridges that we are, you know, that we have been using that money, the additional money for, from the permissive auto fee to expedite. So, we're really pleased to bring this before you as well. If that'd answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have no questions.
No questions.
I do want to just note, I don't have any questions, but note that number four is one of those examples of shared services.
Correct.
One of the outlying areas. So, thank you for noting that as well. So, I will move that we approve of regular agenda items, numbers one through five.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make just one brief comment. First of all, I'm here, and I know Jay Janis is here. I really want to thank him, because over the years, he's one of those individuals. There are two individuals in the county who are very good at keeping your feet to the fire on specific issues. Jay, you're one of them. Jim Breitenbach of Crosby Township's another. And what they do...
And what they do is, I mean, he's talking about, he was talking about Fields, Turtle Road, and the access management questions that may come, and those are tough questions that we have to work with the communities to determine what, if restrictions are necessary, if it's palatable, sometimes it's not, you know, and that happens. But I just want to thank you, Jay, and I want to thank Jim as well for, Jim, you were talking about public record, or public training for ethics and public meetings and records and things of that nature. Jay actually asked many of us for certificates. It's a law, we're required by law, as you know, to attend those meetings, and Jay's one of those individuals who asked specifically for the certificates. So the reason why I want to bring it up is because the more people get involved, you don't have the suspicion that we seem to have in government, and we need more people getting involved. Even if you disagree or agree, it doesn't matter. They need to be involved, and they need to be informed, and there are people doing it. And Jay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ted. All right, on our consent agenda, we've got items six through nine. Are there any questions or comments to these items?
Madam President, I do have questions on number eight. I'm not sure who's here to answer those questions.
I've asked the administrator about number eight, too, so I think we have some familiarity. It's the school resource officer in Norwood.
So on the school resource officer, I noticed that, I was wondering about the amount, 180,000, but it's for two years, so I was able to figure that out. The other thing that I did notice is that the school resource officer started August the 15th, 2019, almost five months ago, and I'm just wondering, why are we just getting this?
I'm sorry, was that the question?
Well, the other thing, I was just wondering, I know there's a certification for a school resource officer, and I was just wondering, is this a patrol officer, or is this a school resource officer that's certified?
So on the budget, on the contract question, John, I know we've had, we've budgeted for school resource officers in the past, so I don't know if this is a continuation of the past agreement, or if this is a new agreement with Norwood. Do you know, John?
I know we have had a school resource officer in Norwood for some time, so I assume that this is a continuation.
I think this is a continuation of a...
And I understand that, but it ended August, in August. We're obviously needing to pass this resolution to continue it. So it's not, I am going to agree with this, for sure, but I was just wondering, why did it take so long to get to us, even if it is a continuance at the end?
We can follow up with the sheriff's office and find out on their timing, yes.
I appreciate that. That's all I had, Madam President.
I had a comment, actually, on item number eight. I have been approached by folks, particularly in Amberly, related to school resource officers and their desire to have school resource officers in their schools, and reached out to the sheriff. This has been, it's been at least a year ago, trying to better understand what partnership there could be there, and also if there would be any funding available. At that time, there was not any funding available, and so this contract, the dollars that are being provided for the school resource officer are Norwood dollars. The partnership is with the sheriff's office, because he's providing the personnel. So I just want to clarify that. But if there are communities that can, you know, have the resources to do this, this partnership, once again, it's another partnership that exists where the sheriff will provide for the personnel if the community can provide for the resources. So I will be calling Amberly and let them know that this was in front of us, but I do think this is an important function for us to be able to provide to the outlying communities that want it, so.
Madam President, I just want to comment, I know Lincoln Heights Elementary uses a resource or officer, and it's been, they just are in love with him, and he really has a relationship with the children there.
All right, so with that, I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items six through nine.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the commission?
I have nothing.
With that, I'm going to move to adjourn.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.[1587.83]